All right. Being at six o'clock, we'll call a meeting in order. We'll start with the Fledge Allegiance.
Let the Fledge be the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common.
Thank you, everybody, for coming. Um, we have one addition to add. Add B to Bill Singer, medical insurance. Do we have anything else? Not? I would take a motion to approve. Make the motion to approve. Thank you, Ryan. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Brian. All in favor?
Aye.
Pose. Consent agenda, is there any item in there?
I had a question on D, line of credit reduction number two. Um, can you just explain what this actually like means for us? Is this like a reduction in what we expect we're going to be paying? Or is it an increase? What does that mean?
So typically, when we have a street project that goes forward, um, we require these letters of credit from the developer. So this one's in reference to the, uh, the project that Mr. Schramm's building on the northwest side of town. And what they do is they complete that project, Brandon reviews it, and then he recommends reductions. So it's, it's a surety they have with us that they're going to finish the project. So as percentages of it get done, then we can reduce that surety that the bank holds for the developer. They send that money to the developer. So it really doesn't have a financial impact, the city accepted the project whenever it was done or wasn't completed, then we could use the surety to complete it ourselves.
Okay. So this is basically stating that Brandon looked at the work they've done and it says that they can have some of that money back?
That's right.
Okay, understood. I'm good.
Maybe I'll ask maybe my understanding that these letter credits were not going to council for approval was a staff approval via my letter was the approval?
They're not proving it necessarily. I just wanted to have it for some information.
Okay, okay, perfect. So we do approve those, and that's laid out in your development agreement, surety for 110% of the cost. As they construct stuff, we reduce that surety because they've done, you know, their work, and then we hold a certain amount for a certain duration. Um, and that'll lead into underneath my report, the two acceptance, um, acceptance of infrastructure, um, that we're going to kind of close out two of these that the surety's been reduced, project's done, we verified that with the developer. So we're going to cut them loose, and it's going to be ours to, to own, because it'll be public infrastructure itself. Thank you.
If there's no other questions or comments, I'd take a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Make that motion.
Thank you, Ryan.
Second.
Thank you, Brian. All in favor?
Aye.
Pose? Thank you. Okay. Visitors to the council. Bill Spitzer, Rowland Hills Transport.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, city staff, thank you for giving me the opportunity. Uh, like you said, Bill Spitzer's, uh, my name. I'm the director of transportation right next door to your beautiful facility here at Rowland Hills Transit. So just want to give you your annual report of kind of, uh, what we're doing with transportation in the community of Casson. Uh, first off, I'll start off with a just little quick overview of public transit, so you have some kind of idea of what that is. I forwarded a packet, uh, to, uh, your staff, and hopefully you got to copy that. Uh, I'm not going to go through everything in here, just a few things I'm going to touch on, and then I'll let you, uh, read the rest at your leisure, and maybe you've already read, uh, read through everything. Uh, that first little, uh, graphic there, that kind of gives you an idea of how many transits there are in the state of Minnesota. In the state of Minnesota, there's actually 37 different, uh, transits that operate in the rural and smaller, uh, communities in the state of Minnesota, and we're one of those. Uh, the second page kind of tells you exactly what our service area is. You can see that we go from Dodge Center, uh, to the west, all the way over to Caledonia to the east, and all the way down to Harmony in the south. So we've got a fairly, uh, fairly big, um, service area that we provide services for. What is public transit? Well, basically, public transit is, is your way of, of providing to the citizens ways to get from here to there, um, in your community, and also outside of your community. Uh, we do do a lot of transports from the Casson area into Rochester for medical appointments or shopping or, or other, um, obligations that somebody may have, uh, within the big city of Rochester, but also we do a lot of transports within, in the community. So just to kind of give you an idea of what we charge, uh, we do try to keep the affordable rates. Uh, Ian, this is kind of where we kind of part from all your nice little graphics there. Uh, we'll get to this one in just a second. This is kind of the meat and potatoes. Uh, but just to kind of give you an idea of what it costs to ride public transit, so within the community of, of Casson, it's $2 to ride anywhere from, um, your point of origin to any place in, in the city of Casson. Uh, if you want to go over to Byron, we're going to charge you just a little bit more. We're going to charge you four bucks to get over to Byron if you need to get over to the swimming, uh, their swimming pool or school or McDonald's, whatever. Uh, it's going to be a little bit more. If you want to get all the way into Rochester, it's a $6 charge. So $6 is the, uh, charge to get into Rochester. So that's kind of our rates. Uh, we try to keep them as affordable as possible. However, by doing that, it does affect our bottom line. In fact, about 8% of our revenues coming in, uh, comes from Fairbox, uh, Fairbox revenue. Uh, keep that my, uh, that number in mind, because later in the presentation, I'll tell you why that's, uh, why that's such an impact. Uh, so the numbers that we have on the board, this is kind of gives you an idea of how many people in the community actually use, uh, public transit. So these are 2025 up to today. Uh, 8,222 people have utilized the service in the community. Uh, you're one of the few communities that we have two buses because of the amount of passengers that we haul here, so you actually have two buses that service your community. Uh, just in the, in this, um, month of September, 1,068, uh, people have utilized your service. So if you're looking back to the 2024 data, which is right below that, 9,434 people utilize your service in all of, uh, 2024. So what does that mean? That means that we are hauling a lot more people by public transit than we have, uh, in the past. In fact, our system is up almost 11% this year. So it's, uh, incredible that we have, uh, driven, uh, more people to public transit, and more people are utilizing that service. So that's a good thing. Uh, what do we attribute that to? I have no idea. Uh, one of the things that we can probably attribute, we did a rebranding, um, as you probably have seen on some of our buses, uh, which makes them very, very highly visible in, in the community. So people are more aware of that. And we did have a campaign, anybody can ride. Uh, so that's kind of one of those things that, uh, we want to make sure that everybody knows that. Uh, all of our buses are mobility assisted, which means that each one of them has a lift, so they're capable of carrying anyone that has a scooter, wheelchair, or whatever. So that's kind of one of the things that, uh, it is kind of important to public transit. If you want to compare yourself to, uh, some of the other communities that we have, uh, it is broken down on this color graph right here. So this color graph, uh, kind of shows you exactly how you compare to the other communities that we service. We have 12, uh, communities that we provide, uh, service to, uh, in the southeastern Minnesota, and of those 12 communities, they kind of go around to about 20 other communities. For example, in the community of, uh, Casson here, obviously, we service, uh, Manorville. So there's always those little, uh, little communities that we also service. If you want a breakdown on how many we serve per county, that is the, uh, one in the back. Uh, that kind of shows you, uh, on a breakdown of, of how that, uh, numbers compare in countywide. So one of the things that everybody asks is they say, well, how do we pay for public transit? Because, uh, you know, the amount of, uh, people that we haul and the equipment that we have, uh, that money must come from somewhere. You're exactly right. It does come from somewhere. You, you pay for that in your, your taxes in the state of Minnesota. So our 1.9 million dollar budget comes from, uh, the state of Minnesota. So how much do we pay of that 1.9? We pay 95, or you as a, a citizen of the state of Minnesota, pay 95% of that. So 95% of our funding comes from MINDOT, whereas the other 5% come. The other 5% comes from you on a local level, uh, to try to, um, help us offset what we call the local match. Now currently, we're doing very well if you, uh, can compare it to the Fairbox revenue that I just gave you, 8%, right? So we're actually, uh, putting some money in the bank. However, um, the state is, uh, going to increase that next year up to 10%. So what does that mean to us in, in the local transit? That means that next year, we'll probably be covered by that extra 3% that we're bringing in in the Fairbox, but moving forward, they're looking at going up to 85, uh, percent that they're going to cover, which means, uh, on a local level, we're going to have to try to find 15% of a local match. Now, one of the things that I'm doing is looking at not only the communities, but also the counties to help. And the reason that I'm going to the counties to help with our operating on a year-to-year basis, uh, is because a lot of things, um, happen with those passenger counts. They go in the rural Casson, rural Manorville, all over the county. So one of the things that I'm going to look for from the counties is to help us with that 15% local match. Why am I here tonight? Well, part of the reason is to kind of give you an update of what is going on in public transit. The other is, we also have what's called infrastructure that we need to replace. You may have seen the new bus, uh, wheeling around the, the city of Casson, and last year, uh, you graciously provided us with the 19,000 to help offset that match. Uh, because not only do we have to pay a match on the operating every year, but every five years, we have to pay for that infrastructure ma- uh, match which pays for the buses. That's a little bit different. Of course, the state, the state of Minnesota can't do everything, uh, the same, so, um, the match that we required for our infrastructure or buses is 20%. So 20%, and that's what, uh, your 19,000 helped us, uh, offset for that new bus. We have a new Casson bus that is still in the garage that's looking to be replaced in the next two years. So one of the things that, uh, I'm approaching the local communities is to try to plan for that, because I did sit in your seat many years ago for 10 years as a mayor in St. Charles, so I know exactly what you're dealing with every year. You're dealing with, you have to come up with a budget, and how are you going to pay for the police fire, all that kind of stuff. So I know that there's going to be things that are, that are going to come up. So what I'm proposing tonight is to, to help a little bit, uh, to, uh, offset some of those costs and do it over a five-year period. Uh, so what I'm asking from the council, and you can see, uh, one of the sheets that we have there, uh, toward the end is, you know, what are some of the benefits of public transit? And 10 reasons why we have public transit. And that's one of the things that I'd like you to pay close attention to, because there's a lot of things that you, as a community, provide besides police and fire, but you also provide this. Uh, so what, uh, what are some of these? Here's where the sticker shot comes in. So when you're buying that new car, and you, you like all the options in it, and you just want to go out and write that check, and then all of a sudden, they tell you how much it's going to be. So for the community of, uh, Casson, you, uh, take up about 19% of our, our pop, or our ridership each year. Uh, so if we calculate that on a annual basis, we'd be asking about $11,000 to help us with that local match, um, for our, our infrastructure over the next five years. So one of the things that I asked, and maybe some of you experimented a little bit with that AI thing, uh, I asked AI, well, what would that be for a return on investment for the community of, of Casson? And one of the things that I was surprised, and if you just give me a second here, she said, or he said, I'm not sure what, uh, AI is yet, uh, but if you, uh, provided that local match, you would get a return on investment, about 622%. Because remember, each year, we have that $2 million operating budget that also is needed to, uh, to operate. So that's kind of my presentation tonight. I will open it up for any questions that you may have about your local transit. Uh, but, uh, one of the things that we're really going to, um, need some support or would like to ask for support from the local community is, is how can you help with that local match? Uh, I've already helped you a little bit, uh, by putting some advertising on the bus. Uh, that's one of the other ways, uh, things that we're trying to do. Uh, that provided about $3,000, uh, over the course of a year. Uh, so one of the things that we're also trying to do is trying to find other revenue sources besides coming to you, because I'm sure you're asked more than once to provide, uh, um, help for, uh, different organizations. So with that, um, Mr. Mayor, I'll open up any questions that you may have, or any other members of the council.
I do have a question right up top of my head. Have you looked at doing more vans and less buses for the shorter runs where you only have one or two clients on your bus going all the way to Rochester at any given time?
You know what? I want to say that mayors think alike, uh, because that's exactly what we're going to do. We're going to move from, uh, buses that we currently have to vans. Uh, unfortunately, you know, we just replaced 10 of our, our buses, uh, this year, uh, but we are requesting for, uh, vans that we can put into the fleet, uh, that we'll be using for, uh, a lot of these communities that only have, uh, two or three people on the bus. Because sometimes it's just not that economical to have a 22-passenger bus hauling around three people. Uh, so one of the things that we're doing is we're going to replace, uh, some of these buses with, uh, um, with vans. And we're still going to keep a, a bus at our disposal, because there are times in the community of Casson, especially around the daycare, or the, uh, early childhood time, uh, preschool, when we have a full bus. Uh, we have a full bus between 7:30 and 8:30 every morning in your community, uh, that hauls all of our preschool kids to, uh, to school. So we'll definitely have to keep a bus at our disposal, but for the trips during the day, we would transition into a van. And there's a heck of a cost savings as well. I didn't tell you how much a bus costs. Uh, a bus currently is costing us $239,000, where a van is about half that, about 114.
Anybody else got any questions?
You said that was 11,000 match per, per year or over five years?
Uh, that's where the sticker shot comes in. It would be calculated 11,000 each year.
I'm not sure if you'd have this number off the top of your head, but of the 8,222 rides you've given year-to-date, do you know how many, um, different people, obviously there's repeat riders, do you know how many specific people there are?
Uh, you, you have some age groups, don't you? All right, so, uh, Casson, uh, okay. So, let's see if we can get you a, this is third quarter, um, totals for the community of Casson. 25 utilized our lift. This is, this is up until the third quarter, so this is three quarters. So elderly fare, uh, 415, 918 have been adults, 319 were students, and 2,670 were preschool. Now, you'll have to do a little adding here, because you're probably going, well, that doesn't equal $8,000. I remember I told you you had two buses. Unfortunately, I didn't, uh, add them together for you. Sorry about that. Uh, so our second bus in, uh, Casson, um, 946 were preschoolers, 438 were students, 1,172 were adults on that bus, 276 were, uh, seniors, that means over 60, and then 17 on that bus were disabled. So apologize for not adding them up, uh, for you, but those are the two buses that, uh, that run in town here.
Do you work with any of the school districts of the cities and counties that you are working with, all these different ones you talk about? Are you working with them to see if they are able to run some of this?
We have not approached the schools, uh, to do a lot of this, um, for, for support. No, we have not.
Aye.
And as always, if you have any questions, we're right next door. I'll be happy to come over and answer any questions that you may have, uh, at any time. Uh, we do report monthly to, uh, MINDOT, so if you ever want like a monthly report as, uh, just in case, just in case you didn't have one more thing on the city agenda, uh, every, every month, we could certainly, uh, provide those, uh, statistics on a monthly basis if you, uh, would like stuff like that.
I will say that you guys were an absolute lifesaver when my kid was in preschool, because I was working at the time, and so getting the kid back and forth on half-day preschools and half-day kindergarten, that was definitely a huge, huge benefit. So, thank you.
Well, thank you very much. Uh, I, I didn't tell any stories tonight, but I, I certainly could. Uh, I guess the story that got me, because when I sat in your chair, Mr. Mayor, I actually cut public transit, and I, I feel bad that I actually did that. Um, it was reinstated a few years after, after that, uh, before my term was up. Uh, but one of the things that really awakened me to public transit and the need for it is, uh, an individual that was in a wheelchair, and she was paying over $100 a trip to go into Mayo, um, every, uh, every time she needed to go there. And our fee is $6, as I told you. So it's, it's quite an impact for a lot of individuals, and I always tell them, tell people this too, I'm very lucky. I have two cars that sit in my garage, and I can go anytime, anywhere, uh, wherever I want. Uh, and a lot of the individuals that we haul, in fact, 60% of them don't have access to a driver's license. Uh, so this is their only form of transportation. Uh, this is the only way that they can get from here to there. So, uh, you do provide, uh, a heck of a service for, for your community.
Do you know what your fees were last year?
Yeah, so that's, that's the, uh, million-dollar question. Do we, uh, increase the fares, uh, to try to offset some of those? Uh, our fares, uh, were the same except for the intra-city, uh, which was $3. That moved up to $4. Otherwise, we've, we've kept the fares the same. Uh, some of the things that we've seen is we pay very close attention to the trends that are going on in other transits, and what some of the transits have seen when they increased the, uh, rates, uh, the ridership went down, and we all know what happens is is that even though you may raise your rates, uh, to try to gain more revenue, if you lose ridership, sometimes that's a negative effect, uh, on that. So, uh, yeah, that's, we have considered that, though, Mr. Mayor.
Another question I got, you know, you're doing pro-ride, do you do a, for the people that use your service every month, I mean, you've got a list of, do you do a monthly rate?
You know, we give them a, a discount card where you would guarantee that they're going to, that might bring you more revenue per month, but... That was one of the things we were exploring, uh, before, uh, the Mayo Clinic brought their buses in, uh, to haul the, uh, commuters into Mayo. We were actually looking at some monthly passes that people could buy that would actually save them about $60 a month if they, they bought a pass. Uh, we put that plan on hold when, uh, the commuter buses started, uh, providing service to the community of Casson and others around the area, but we certainly will look at, uh, doing that as well.
Well, I think for the people that are regulars, I think that would be a benefit to you and them. I'd definitely be more interested, do you look into that and giving us some input on that, too?
Will do.
Anybody got any other questions?
Just to know the number, what did we previously, do we have a number previous that we were contributing?
No.
I think that was just a flat rate that you provided to us the last time.
I think so.
We've contributed, we've never contributed annually. We've contributed for the buses, an acquisition of buses.
Yeah. I was just wondering if we had a number.
All right, well, thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you very much, and have a great night.
All right. Up next, we have Bill Singer with our medical insurance.
All right. My name is Bill Singer. I, uh, work with the city on their benefit package, uh, health, life, dental, disability, all that type of stuff, and, uh, um, work with an agency called AT Group. And one of the things we do at AT Group is pretty much specialize in just public groups, cities, mainly cities, 150 of them cross the whole state of Minnesota, and so I've been working with Linda for at least 15 years. Yeah. Yeah, so a long time. So, so we're talking about health insurance, and the reason I'm here is because it's been a very bad year in the state of Minnesota for health insurance, and it's not just, uh, it's not just Casson, it's everywhere. Um, so a little, uh, history on, well, the landscape in the state of Minnesota is, we are an under-50 group, uh, so we're considered a small group. Um, there are four small group carriers in the state of Minnesota that work in our area. Um, well, actually, one of them bowed out, so Health Partners isn't playing here anymore. So we're down to three. We're down to Blue Cross, Medica, and United Healthcare. And so we're currently with Blue Cross, and what that means, we've got two options to look at. Um, if you've looked at this sheet, you know that I've looked at, uh, United Healthcare, and they are actually more than we currently are. Um, and then we've also, uh, I will look at Medica as soon as Medica releases the rates, but they haven't done that yet. They expect that about eight days from now. Uh, but I'm not holding my breath, because they've notoriously been higher than Blue Cross, so there's probably not a lot of promise there. With that said, we have a couple other options that aren't small group fully insured carriers, okay? And that is, um, the Service Co-op. You may have heard of that. Uh, they have declined us for the third time in two years. Um, so that's not an option for us. Um, so I'm expecting that we won't even get a, we won't even get a good look from them for probably a couple more years. Uh, I would guess at least two. Uh, and then the other one was going back with, uh, Public Employees Insurance Plan, which we just left a couple of years ago, because they gave us a 50% increase, um, at some point. So, so now we are here. Uh, I suppose we can talk about the specifics on this page now. If we go all the way to the top, um, our current, there's a number there, 68,448 and 53,431. Uh, currently, the city offers two plans, okay? The plan designs are the same, but the networks are different. If you go to the non-mail network, there's a significant reduction. If everybody in the whole city went to the non-mail network, the number would be 53,000. If everybody went to the mail option, the number is 68,000, okay? Our actual enrollment is somewhere in between there, and it depends on where people decide. So it's, it could be right in the middle, it may not be in the middle. Um, but with the increase, uh, that Blue Cross gave us, the mail plan got 19.5% when you add the rate increase to the age increase, because all of us got a year older, and small groups are all age-based. So we got a 19.5% increase that brought us up to just short of 82,000. And for the non-mail plan, we got a 16.4% increase that brought us up to 62,195. That's as bad as I've seen it since the Affordable Care Act came into play. Um, there's a couple things that are causing that, if you want to hear that, otherwise I'll just keep moving on. Um, one of the things that Linda said, well, we need to see what we need to do to get these rates down, and in explaining to Linda that the only way at this point, since we can't jump carriers and find better rates anywhere else, the only place, the only we can do to, to lower our premium is to reduce benefits. That's, that's the only option left. So we looked at increasing the deductible. But I will notice, uh, we'll let you know that with the 17, with the 19.5% increase, the employees deductible already moved up $350 from 2,700 to 3,050, and the family deductible moved up from 5,400 to 6,100. So those deductibles continue to go up, because originally, when the Affordable Care Act came out, that was right down around 2,000, and then maybe even for a year, it was under 2,000. So what happens is, there's, there's language in the Affordable Care Act that forces insur- it's not the insurance company sticking it to you. There's language in the Affordable Care Act that forces insurance companies to continue to increase their deductibles. Well, not necessarily their deductibles. The language forces insurance companies to increase the out-of-pocket expenses for the members and the member's family on an ongoing continual forever basis, so this will keep happening. Um, and the increases have to keep up with the rate of inflation, and like I try to explain to the employees, it's not paycheck inflation, it's healthcare inflation. So, which is twice as much as paycheck inflation. So, uh, so we're at 3,050 this year, so everybody's paying $350 more or, uh, $700 more, and next year, it could be higher than that. It just depends what the federal government Affordable Care Act formula says that the deductibles have to move to. All right, so with that said, Linda said, what can we do to get down to, uh, can we take 10% off of the increase? Um, and so I looked at some plans, and so the second option- And so the second option, which is just under the renewal option, is to move the deductible to...from a twenty-seven past the three thousand fifty up to a thirty-four hundred. And that brings...that takes about four percent off the deductible. So we have to go further than that. If we go to a forty-two hundred dollar deductible for single and an eight thousand, four hundred dollar deductible for family, we take roughly nine percent off of our nineteen point seven five percent renewal. So I'll stop there. See if you have questions.
I actually just have one, and I think it's just a typo. I just wanna make sure.
Could you?
And the two options, the first one says without mail clinic access, and it's the more expensive one. Should they be flip-flopped?
Oh, yes, you're right. The thirty-four hundred with mail access is always more expensive than without.
That's what I asked him, but I just wanted to make sure.
Excellent, that says it too.
Yep, well, my copy paste function was working, though, so...okay, so I don't know where to go from there, because what you end up is in a situation in the state of Minnesota where everybody in the state is getting twenty percent with Blue Cross, all the way from Ely, all the way, you know, down to Casson, we're at twenty percent for the access. And there's nowhere for us to run. So the reaction that I've had from most cities, most cities are just living with it, okay? A couple of them are exploring options. There's not a lot of them that have a lot of places to go because the market is very small. In most places of the state, we have Blue Cross, Medica, and Health Partners is gone. And then we have United Healthcare, which is higher everywhere. So you're down to two carriers. And so we're kinda stuck there. So I'll stop. Any more...any questions?
Yeah, first, I guess, you've got this note here, it says age-based rates, one hundred percent community pool.
Yep.
What is that, and is there any levers in there we could use?
There is none in a community pool. For groups under fifty, the rules are that the rates have to come out age-based. For every year, the rates are two point seven percent more. So it starts at age twenty...well, twenty to twenty-five is the same, and then it's two point seven percent all the way to age sixty-four. So if it was my family, then you would take my age and my spouse's age and my kid's age, and you add them all up, and that's the family premium. But everybody in that pool that has that same plan gets that same exact rate. So you're in a community pool right now that includes everybody in Region Eight of the state, which goes all the way north to Good...through Good Hugh County, all the way up to the metro area, and it goes all the way over to thirty-five W, and then it's the whole corner section of the state. You're all in one pool. Everybody who has these plans gets the same rate, and all your renewals are not based on the city of Casson's utilization. It's based on this whole pool's utilization. So your leverage is only as big as the percentage in which you represent this whole pool, and it's not enough. So you can't go to Blue Cross and say, "Give us something, we want another percent down." Because no, because they have to publish these rates, and once they publish them, they're done. They can't change them, they can't negotiate, they can't go up, and they can't go down.
Yeah, so trying to like co-op with other small towns wouldn't help either than based upon what you said, right? Because the rate's fixed.
Okay, so say that question again.
Trying to like co-op with other communities to get a larger pool under this contract wouldn't work either.
It wouldn't specifically in our situation. And the reason is, is because if we were to do a pool, they don't want us, okay? Because over the last five years, we've perpetually used more than twice as much as we send in. We'll send in four hundred and fifty thousand, we'll use a million one. So if there was a group of cities trying to pool, which is what the Minnesota Health Consortium, you've heard of that, that's exactly what they do. We...they pool cities, okay? And then we tried to jump in their pool, and they said, "Not yet." Okay, so no, again, three times in the last two years. So you're right, there's no leverage for us by joining with other cities. And plus, yeah, so, okay, I'll stop there. There's no leverage for us there.
Okay. I see you've got these other columns here for HSA contributions.
Yes.
So it appears to be that basically whatever the deductible is, that's just getting multiplied by the number of single and families and added in. So is that something that we're contractually obligated to do?
Yes. We contribute half of a family deductible or half of a single deductible to an HSA for each employee.
Okay, so we don't have that leveraged in here?
Well, I mean, it's something that's in the contracts, something could be gone through in a contract negotiation, but it's something that's been in contracts since before I was here, so it's something we could bring up, but it's...
Yeah, because I'm looking at your columns here, and if I include the actual premium cost and those HSA contributions together, going to higher deductibles is actually more expensive.
That's right.
Yeah, there's no advantage, definitely, to...because the way the contract is, is that the amount of money we would save in premiums gets added to the HSA contributions to the employees. And so the employees get more in their HSA, we pay less. There's just...there's no reason to do that. I would have to make sure that we're talking monthly costs as opposed to annual costs when we add up those columns, but with the examples that I've calculated out, it's...
Yeah, so raising deductibles doesn't do anything, because the people being covered don't pay the deductible anyway, we still pay it. So just for reference here, if we had fixed the HSA contribution from last year at...you said it's half, so twenty-seven hundred divided by two, or fifty-four hundred divided by two, so a total of sixty-four thousand, eight hundred, it's what it says at the top of that spreadsheet, I believe.
Correct.
Are you in control? So if we could fix that number for this year and then look at the combined increase, it would only be eight point eight percent.
Yeah, I mean, if you could cap the HSA contribution at the same number, you'd be better off having higher deductible, absolutely.
So...
Otherwise, the deductible tracks, you know, the HSA contribution tracks with the higher. So you save on the premium increase, but you lose on the deductibles or the HSA.
Yeah, so off the top of my head, like, there's no point in going any higher than...I assume this thirty fifty is the minimum. We can't go any...
Thirty fifty...
Can't keep it at twenty-seven hundred.
You can't because the federal government forces that change.
So we can't do anything about that. So until we could potentially renegotiate the HSA contributions, there's no point in going any higher on the deductibles, because it's actually making it worse for us.
Yeah, I mean, the only other thing would be, once you had a point where the HSA is ...or, you know, once you've already maxed out the HSA, that's legally contributable, once your deductibles would exceed that, then the city would start being able to save again, but you're getting to a number where it's...
Yeah, it's like forty-four hundred.
I'm not sure if that's even qualified as a...as a plan we'd be able to offer.
It's not a health plan, then. It's a...it's forty-four hundred dollar deductible for singles. People just hate it.
Yeah. catastrophic care kind of...
Yeah, it is, it is. You find out that most people just leave employees.
It doesn't matter if we're paying the hundred percent of the deductible, what the deductible is, though, is what I'm saying, right?
Well, we're not paying a hundred percent of the deductible, we're only paying half, but...
Oh, we're paying fifty percent.
Fifty percent, yeah.
So that forty-four hundred deductible would only be twenty-two hundred, which is...that's not that bad.
You still...you still lose...you still lose the savings that you gained in lowering the deductible by contributing to the HSA account, so...
Yeah.
Per the contract.
The premium's not decreasing fast enough to make it worth it with the way we currently are set up.
Well, we've got this information for you tonight, and I thank Bill for coming. I don't know if you've got any more questions, otherwise we do need to have a council action on this. Not tonight, we need to have it by the twenty-second, because we'd like to have that insurance roundup. I think Linda's looking at scheduling it the next week after that, probably like the twenty-seventh or twenty-eighth or something like that of October. So, you know, we'll wait. I mean, one thing we can wait on is we can see what Medica comes in at.
Yep.
You know, maybe there'll be the Hail Mary.
Yeah, right.
It's been fifteen...sixteen years since Brett Favre joined the Vikings in two thousand and nine, and, you know, maybe we'll get the Hail Mary, but I don't know about that. So I expect that what you're seeing here is probably the options that will be available for us.
Right.
On this one, where it says nineteen...is that nineteen point seven five? It's kinda scrabble together, increase. But that's include...that would be a hundred percent enrollment in mail.
Yeah, so you're gonna be somewhere between those.
Yeah, but where the actual...
Right, and the thing is, is that...
Single versus family?
Where you know there's gonna be people switching, so, I mean, to give you a solid apples-to-apples, that's...
Yeah, it's hard.
So, you know, you're probably looking at eighteen percent, roughly.
We have eighteen single contracts, fifteen family contracts.
You want the breakdown between mail and OMC?
Twenty-two are the high...are the access...the mail access ones.
Okay.
Eleven are the high-value, no mail.
So it's about a third that are...OMC and the other two-thirds are mail.
So, yeah, so we'd be looking at...
It'll never be a little...
Yeah, it'd be a little lower, it'd be more like seventy-five.
Assuming everybody had the same premium.
Yeah, so, I mean, it'd be seventeen and a half, eighteen percent, maybe, if you were in that kind of range.
So you'll have premiums here where somebody is sixty-four, the premium's gonna be sixteen hundred dollars a month, and somebody who's twenty-one, the premium's gonna be five hundred, six hundred dollars a month. That's kinda how it happens.
Be in, lucky duck.
So, yeah.
The sad part is when they're kids, that they charge unfortunate for them, too.
Yeah.
Yep, so...
If we had no more...
Any more questions on that? Did you have any questions on the...Linda said maybe talk about the private care, private...
Oh, the family medical leave?
Yeah. So you wanna know the results of how that whole system has worked? That carriers are not interested in doing this at all, because they know it's a money loser. They believe that the state of Minnesota has underfunded this, so their betting rates are gonna go up. Some carriers have minimum participation of twenty-five people, so there are carriers that would not take us because we're not big enough. Then the other thing that makes it more difficult is many of the carriers that say, for example, MetLife, would...if they would take us, which I don't think they would...well, I'd have to see if we follow...but we have to put in multiple other lines, which means you have to change over your dental, and you have to change over your life. And those are not easy tasks at the end of the year when you're dealing with health insurance renewals to flip everything over. And then we would be going to less stable dental rates, and so we were...so...
Because they're gonna make it back.
Yeah, right.
They'll take it back on the other lines, because they're potentially covering their losses on the paid leave.
You're exactly right. So what they're saying is, we're really not interested in doing this, but to make sure we don't lose our shirt, we're gonna make sure you have to enroll life insurance and dental insurance, or you have to do long-term disability and this, because we think those...we think it's underfunded. So what I've found is I've left for...I've got a hundred proposals on my desk, and I think I might have three, and two of them are school districts, and one of them's a power plant. I don't...at this point, I have zero cities your size that are...that have competitive proposals. Most of them are coming in twenty percent higher than the state for the same plan, so... so we're not missing out there, they're just...no one's interested.
Yeah, I mean, so based on the research Linda's done with Bill's help, I think that's what we're leaning towards right now, is we'll be sticking with the state, I think, for next year and seeing how it all goes. I expect the state's tax will go up, because they're gonna be able to raise it up to point, you know, one point one if they want to, and we'll see how it goes. I mean, but, yeah.
Maybe they'll vote it out.
Who knows?
Optimist.
And Bill, on that note, correct me if I'm wrong, for the Minnesota paid leave, if you start with a state, you can switch to a private, but if you start with a private and wanna go to the state, they try to lock you in for a couple of years. Is that correct? I thought I heard that somewhere.
I tell you that the carriers that I've got proposals from are giving one-year rate renewal...one-year rate guarantees. So if you're with them, the rates don't go up until another year. So there'll be no decisions made from private carriers for a year. But if you're with the state, I...from what I understand, there can be decisions made every three months. And if we find out that the state's administration is so bad that there'll be people paying more to leave, okay, that's possible.
The state also charges you to not participate in their plan.
Yeah, right. If you wanted it, it costs this much, but if you don't want it, it just costs less, you still have to pay, so...
Thank you.
All right.
Up next, mayor's report. We've got a proclamation for Lions White Cane Day will be October eighteenth, twenty-twenty-five. So it's...the White Cane Day is...they're trying to raise money, and every penny they raise goes...is out to give the sight, a gift of sight, so...so we just have a proclaim Lions White Cane Day on October eighteenth, twenty-twenty-five. Oh, I got a mayor's report tonight. Public forum, we have Jamie Judish. Can you come up?
Jamie Judish with Five-O-Four Ventures, Five-O-Four Sixteenth Street.
Yes, and Brad Clemens, same.
And, well, I think we're good on...we talked about the engineer's report, but we wanted to talk about the development agreement with Five-O-Four, so the apartment building over by the school. One of the requirements is the sidewalk to go in along the north edge of the property. We're not at all opposed to putting the sidewalk in, but it would be the only one on that section of the street. And our concern at this time is that primarily from pedestrians, kids on bikes, stuff going from east to west, so I'm not turning it around, is that if they get on this sidewalk, then it ends in grass, and then it's a sidewalk to nowhere. And then instead of crossing at the crosswalks there at the corner, we're gonna be pushing a certain amount of traffic to be crossing kind of out in the middle of the road. And we've just seen that go poorly in...with other developments. So our hope was that we could enter into a sidewalk agreement, so at such a time, we'd go and put it in when the rest of it went in. But I think that's really up to you. So that would be our request, is to delay the installation of the sidewalk until there's a place for it to go, instead of having it be a sidewalk essentially to nowhere terminating on the western edge of the property. Did I get that right?
Yes.
Okay.
Is that something we will have to look at with staff?
Yeah, we can definitely take it into consideration, so...
Awesome, perfect.
Because I know one of my biggest concerns on that would be if all of a sudden, two years down the road, you do it, you're gonna have a lot more cost in...on your end versus if you did it now, just...
I think our biggest part is safety of...we're in three schools right there. We're gonna have kids, and they're gonna ride the bike down, they're gonna catch our driveway, and they're gonna cross that road right there in the middle of the street. So we don't want that to happen, of course, and I don't think you guys do either. But in all the other developments we did, we've all the...we've done city sidewalk agreements with it. When the rest of it goes in, we pay our portion of it. You know what? You put it in, we pay for it, or we put it in at our expense.
That's something we'll have to look at, and we'll get back to you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. No public hearing, no committee report, no old business, new business. The Casson twenty-twenty-five AA bond sale resolution. Mr. Bubane. Good news.
Yeah, I think so. Good evening, mayor and council. So last time I was here, I presented recommendations for financing some work this year. Just to remind the council, there's a variety of projects involved, you know, various streets and utilities and so forth. And my recommendations at that time was to use cash for a bunch of those projects, whether that be out of your stabilization fund, maybe you take it away from your water fund. I think staff is still kind of working their way through where that's gonna come from. But that would leave just the water tower project to be financed. And the reason I wanted to leave it just to the water tower was because we could credit enhance it. So I recommended that the city renew its credit rating with standard implores, and then bolster that with the state's AAA rating behind it. So you said go forth and make it happen, so we...with staff's help, and thank you for your assistance. So you said go forth and make it happen, so we, with staff's help, and thank you for your assistance in that, we put together preliminary official statement, we scheduled a call with Standard and Poor's. They reaffirmed the city's double A rating, um, I thought that was pretty nice, and the fact that, uh, the, uh, rating agencies have changed their criteria. In fact, it's a little more difficult, I've seen some not, you know, downward movement in some communities. Um, Tim was hoping for a better result, but it's a good result in my opinion, maintaining that double A, stable rating. Um, in reading the rating report, if you're wondering what it would take to, um, bolster that double A to a greater, uh, level, um, it identified, well, the first thing it identified was the local economy, which you don't really have a lot of direct control on.
If we triple the size of the city and we add sixteen manufacturers and become a Oatana, then we might be able to get triple A.
Yeah.
Otherwise, we can't. I, I tried really hard to get triple A just for us, but.
Yeah, yeah.
We have a better credit rating than the US government does, so, I mean, that's a positive, I guess.
Yeah, yeah. Well, you guys are doing very well, so don't let anybody try to tell you otherwise. Just to give you, Wabashaw sold yesterday, and they had been, uh, double A minus, and they, their rating was maintained at a double A minus, but they were a double A minus negative, meaning they're teetering on getting pushed down to an A plus depending on their future debt. And that was some downward pressure too, I mean, potential future debt, um, could push that down as well. Um, but for now, everything's going really well. Um, okay, so then we were doing the competitive sale, we took bids this morning. Uh, there were six bidders, normally we're targeting three to five bids, so getting six bids was, um, a, a good result, meaning people are very interested in City of Cassin. Um, we had, the low bid came in at the net effective rate of three point seven eight, uh, percent. Um, and I had shown you four point two seven percent when I was here a month or two ago, but I, I, I know I built cushion into that rate and I probably mentioned it, so there was some cushion I built into that rate, plus the fact that there was a rate cut in between the time when I was here and when we had the bid opening this morning. Um, so that's the reason for the larger, the normal gap. Um, now, the way they did the bids, um, Tim, did you happen to share this updated?
No, I didn't share that one, I don't think, there are a couple other, uh, options, there are a couple ones in there. There's the, uh, the bid document itself, all the different bids on there.
This one here?
Yeah.
Okay, well, let me just, uh, explain, um, ultimately, they're, the, the bidders bid their compensation. How much are they gonna take out of your pie? Um, but then they also bid the interest rates, and you'll notice that according to the bid form, it's a coupon of four percent through the, for, for the duration of it. But you don't see on this, what you'd see on this is that you'd see the yields, and these are much lower rates ranging from two point four one percent to three point nine five percent. So what that means is, is because they were willing to accept the lower yield, their return on their investment, but they wanna slap a four percent interest rate on the bonds, they paid a premium for that. They're saying, hey, you pay on a higher coupon rate, but we'll give you cash to kind of make up for it and the difference. So I downsized these bonds from three point one eight million to three million seventy-five thousand.
And you do have that document he's referencing, it was emailed out to everybody, it's not a Dropbox, but.
So, um, you know, you ask yourself, well, how can a bond with four percent coupons all the way through have a net effective rate of three point seven eight percent? It's because we're taking into account that we're borrowing much less money. That, that premium coming in reduces the net interest cost of the deal. Um, now, if you were to compare my cash flow to the bid tab, you'll notice there's an ever-so-slight difference in the net effective rate, it was three point seven eight point, excuse me, three point seven eight two eight percent versus three point seven eight five five percent. And that's just because of me resizing the bond issue and removing, uh, not removing, um, reallocating the principal to generate level payments, and so that's for the reason for that very, very, very slight, uh, change in the rate. It's insignificant, but just in case you saw it, it's not a typo, but that's the reason. And ultimately, if you were to, um, look at the total payments over the life of the deal, I had shown council principal and interest payments over the life of the deal totaling four point seven something percent, and we're, excuse me, four point seven something million, we're at four point five, it's basically a reduction of about two hundred thousand dollars over the life of the deal. So, um, pretty good result in, in my mind, so. Why don't I stop there and take questions?
So anybody got any questions for Mike?
I know it's riveting.
I'd just like to hear that it come in cheaper, so, you know, we'll let him come back and.
I think he builds a lot of conservative in, so it always comes back cheaper, makes him look.
I always do.
Makes him look good that way.
Hey, whatever, okay.
Um, it has happened where I've missed the other way, uh, but I work hard not to. Generally, just, you know, I know you're being kind of funny, but there is some truth in that. So when I design the, um, the original issues, I usually build in a quarter point cushion, and I usually explain that to council that I think it's high, just because I'm trying to take into account potential market forces. So I'm trying to set an expectation and beat it, so. But generally, there's not a Fed cut in between as well, so that leaded for the, that led to the greater than normal, yeah, so.
So, Mike, if we go to the debt markets again, you know, we had talked with the rating call folks and let them know that, you know, we do have some potential stormwater sewer products. Do we need to do another rating call next year, or is that AA hold for next year?
We have to do it every time.
Oh, okay.
Yep.
Should've gone bigger.
What's that?
Yeah.
Well, you.
I just said if he was looking for more, we should've gone bigger now.
Well, yeah, but then you'd be paying interest on a bunch of money that you don't need.
Fair enough.
So.
We're supposed to get the rates twice more this year, so maybe next year will be pretty good too, so.
Yeah, we'll see. Well, I'll come in with a higher rate start again.
Well, they're talking November's the next cut rate, is what I've heard.
Well, right, so, you know, we have a dual mandate at the Fed, and, um, we don't have a jobs report, but the private payroll data showed jobs are still sluggish, so potentially that could happen.
Well, you do have a resolution in your packet though for tonight, um, and we would be looking for approval of that resolution to complete this, uh, transaction.
We got no more questions. I would make a motion for the resolution authorizing the issuance and sale of three million one hundred and seventy-five thousand dollar general obligation water service bond, series twenty, twenty-five A.
I'll make a motion to approve the bond sale.
Ryan, do we have a second?
Yeah, I'll second.
Thank you, Paul, all in favor?
I'll check that one, I'll check.
Can I get the number on that bond? How much?
The one.
You said three million what?
Three million one hundred and seventy-five thousand.
It should be three million zero seven five.
Oh, okay.
Well, that was the one you guys sent over, so we can.
I didn't catch that, I sent.
Okay.
Danielle sent it after I had asked for it updated, but it'll be three million seventy-five thousand.
Three million seventy-five thousand.
Motion to approve with the correct number.
I'll still approve.
All right, thank you. I, I was just reading what was in front of me.
No, I appreciate that, thank you, I'm sorry, I didn't catch that.
So, we have a motion and a second with the approved amount in the bonds, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, ahs. Thank you.
Very good, um, we have a closing scheduled for October twenty-second, so we'll be reaching out to staff and getting that done for you, so, thanks again.
Thank you very much.
Anything else you'd like me to stick around for tonight?
I think we're good. Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Thanks, Mike.
Yep.
Unless you want some more transit stuff, you know.
All right. Up next will be city hall efficiency improvement.
So this is a project you're familiar with, um, and I don't wanna steal Linda's thunder, but I'll let her talk about a little bit about, uh, what we did was, we went through, uh, state contracts, state, uh, bid process and worked with a vendor, and you have two different proposals in there, and after we got that information back from that state contract bid vendor, we were not satisfied with the numbers. We felt it was high, and so we reached out and we, um, took a look at another vendor. Um, a lot of it is the efficiency of the windows replacement. We have, uh, the windows here are still originals of the building, so they're thirty years old, um, as well as the siding. So, um, you've got, uh, the three, three different items in there, one for windows from La Sina, one from, uh, for, for siding from La Sina, and then the KBS proposal there. I think, Linda, you can take it from there.
Yeah, the La Sina one actually includes more windows than the other one did, and, uh, different windows, sliders instead of crank ones, because the crank ones always seem to be, um, breaking. And I talked to the state vendor, and he said, well, we can cut things out, or we can, you know, get rid of things, and, and the state vendor is actually using local HVAC mechanical, electrical people. But La Sina's out of Rochester, and they came in, um, a lot lower. We were getting siding then that matches, that will match the booster station that'll be out here. They, La Sina will put the siding over this side, current siding that we have, where the other vendor wanted to take it all off. So, uh, La Sina said, no, we can, we can put it over the top of this, this permanent siding over the top of what we have now. And what we have now, there's, there's, um, spots where it's bowing out. We've actually screwed it down again. The cedar siding is just not, um, not holding up very well. So, uh, I think, with Tim and I have talked about it, and we are recommending the La Sina bid.
Yeah, it's about seventy-five thousand total versus about a hundred and twenty-eight thousand, so.
Is there any concerns with putting the new siding over the old siding that having issues?
They didn't have any.
Yeah, I mean, in certain spots, we're gonna remove the old stuff. The problem with the other proposal is, they were gonna remove it all, and we felt that actually might be more problematic because in some situations where they're gonna take that stuff off, we're gonna run into more expensive fixes that we don't even know.
Yeah.
So it seemed to make more sense to us to, and they're gonna take a look at it, make sure that it's sound, you know, from a building perspective, but it, it seemed like that made more sense to us to, to utilize it that way. Plus, we'd have to close city hall if they were gonna do that, and we prefer not to do that.
You said, uh, sliding windows versus casement windows. I guess, uh, my question is, is how often you guys open the windows? And.
Spray and fall.
The reason I, I ask is because I think typically casement windows are more efficient than sliders, so if you want to be better at keeping drafts and the windows sealed, casements tend to be better for that. Which are the crank style ones you're talking about?
We've just seen, I mean, these are all crank ones here, and they have, have had more, uh, they've broken a lot faster.
The cranks break, yeah.
Yeah, so, I mean, I, I, you know, I'm not gonna date you, I don't know what the cost per is, per se. I know that the, the ones that they were proposing in their proposal are much more expensive, and obviously that is something we have to weigh, you know, uh, so I don't know what the, the R factor is between a casement versus a, um, a sliding.
Well, usually they're only R factoring the glass, but.
Sure.
Um, maybe, uh, just look, ask La Sina, like, if you switch the windows to casements instead of sliders, like, how much difference does that make?
Sure.
I imagine it's not gonna make fifty thousand dollars.
Yeah, I mean, there's no requirement to approve tonight, I mean, it'd be nice to have them do it by the end of the year. We'd like to get it started, but at the same time, we can definitely still check on it too.
I also thought, um, last time we kind of talked about city hall upgrades, there was some talk about the roof, and I haven't seen anything about roof work in here.
And we're not planning on doing a roof right now, uh, we're, we have the report from, uh, the roof, uh, folks that do their study every year, and for the time being, we're planning on just maintaining our current roof.
Keep patching the shingles that fly off?
Structurally, it's sound, it, every year we lose some, it's a very large roof, and they are, you know, as you know, the, the shingles, we, you know, you'll see them in the parking lot if it gets up to thirty miles an hour again from the west wind. Um, but they haven't found any intru, we haven't found any intrusions or any issues with water, and I prefer not to spend the money on the roof if we don't have to.
Well, if, if we receive that solar grant to put panels up, we probably wanna have the roof moved before we put panels on.
I appreciate you bringing it up because that's, uh, the interesting part about that is if we do receive the grant for it, the roof area that's gonna be utilized for the solar panels themselves would be eligible for the thirty-seven, or thirty, the thirty percent match from the federal government, the tax credits. So that's something we would do, if, if we need to replace that roof area, so we'll have it evaluated. If that needs to be done, then we can include it as part of that grant application, and then it would be, be thirty percent off too, which would be a cost savings. I mean, I'm figuring the solar panels will go over the top, and they'll just, you know, no worries, you know, just make the whole roof out of solar panels, and we'll be good to go, you know.
Yeah, we can all, we can all dream, I guess. Yeah, I just don't want us to put all those solar panels up, and then two years later, be like, oh, we got a leak.
Oh, no, absolutely, and that's something we had, we had to have all the roofs. We do have the roof inspected every year, um, Charlie works with our vendor for that, and, uh, we do expect the, I think the next one on the schedule is the PD's roof. I think that one's slated for maybe twenty twenty-seven, and that one's an, you know, ARPD, kind of a rubber roof, so it's not too bad of a, a roof, but, um, there's gonna be some costs there coming up.
So, staff is, like, you, you would like to get going this year on this?
We would.
So, I would like to make a proposal that we reach out, find out what the price difference is, but I'd like to approve it tonight with what we got, and then you can shoot out an email, and we could look at the cost difference, cause I would like to get going before it's, we're too late, you know, if we wait two more weeks, three more weeks, cause you should have a price back fairly.
I would think you'd get a price back.
You'll get it within the day.
So if we could just shoot out an email and look at the price difference.
Do you wanna have it approved with a, a cap on the total cost? So, I mean, you know, like I said, I, I don't really wanna spend more than we need to on this. I'm uncomfortable going too high, so the proposal.
But I don't know, I don't know how much difference there is gonna be in cost savings, I mean, with the casement versus this.
Right.
And then, versus your heat bill, I don't see your, you, it's gonna be so minimal that, that's why I'd like to.
Yeah, no, I mean, I guess if they're, I don't even know if it's per window, and if it's a hundred dollars more, I'm not even sure if that's worth it.
Right.
You know, but you were saying.
I was gonna say, does it legally make sense to approve the bid that we've been given subject to the fact that we could go lower? We just can't exceed it, is that legal?
Yeah. I think that would be.
And that's what I'm looking at, yeah.
Approve it, but we would, if it goes lower, then we could go lower, otherwise we wouldn't exceed the amount that's bid well.
And I would make that motion?
Okay, we have a motion to go with the bid, and then looking at numbers, and if it goes lower, we could vote on that. We have a motion, do we have a second? I will second it myself. Is there any other discussion? All in favor of this, go with La Sina windows and siding?
Aye.
Aye.
Ahs.
Thank you.
Thanks, Linda, Linda did a lot of work getting this ready, so appreciate her efforts.
And I just know there's limited time in the winter, so if we can get rolling.
Yeah, that's right.
All right, uh, up next, the admin report.
Okay, um, council member had mentioned, uh, solar battery storage, those have all been submitted. Um, the state's reviewing them, I've had optimistic, uh, feedback from the state, so we're expecting to see, uh, to see what comes up on that. Uh, in addition to that, last week, Jared and I attended a, a tour and training at the Helene Solar Factory in Rogers. Um, so one of the criteria that's changing with President Trump's administration is a requirement for, uh, domestic content, uh, production for solar and other things like that, which, um, you know, there's goods and bads to everything, you know, it's, uh, it's interesting. All the material being processed there is domestic, the machinery is all made in China. So all of the extruders and all the different big factory equipment was, but at least the panels themselves are, are made in the United States, so. Um, so it's gonna be interesting, um, we're working with them to make sure that this product's right size. I think, as I've mentioned before, the first criteria for us is the batteries, uh, because we have the capacity that we need to cover. Uh, we would like to see some, uh, potential for local generation too, we feel like that would be, uh, that could be a positive for us. So, I'm hoping still to have something for you before the end of the year. We're meeting with some of these, uh, folks next week, actually, here in Cassin to, uh, they're gonna take a look at the sites we're looking at and, um, seeing kind of what they're thinking for costs. If we can get the product started before the end of the year, we would qualify for that thirty percent tax credit from the federal government, once again, so if, if it ends up being like a six million dollar project, it would actually only be like a four point two million dollar project, so it would be a benefit to us. Uh, federal government shutdown, we talked a little bit about that, uh, at staff level. We aren't seeing a lot of effects right now, however, the longer that goes, the more effect, there will be on a variety of things. Uh, for folks in town here, we know, like homeowners and small business and things like that, so hopefully, uh, federal government will find a way to, uh, to make an agreement that's, uh, that maybe doesn't satisfy everyone, but is, uh, able to keep people moving forward. We did receive that final funding for that, that federal Safe Routes to School money in late September, so before the end of the, the fiscal year for the federal government. Um, some information on the Dodge Center ambulance there. I did email out that link to the LMC property tax calculator, I had a couple of customers, um, ask me about that after last meeting, so email that out, um, if you have any questions on it, you know, it's, it's an interesting tool, um, and it's nice because it does show, you know, comparables, you can kind of pick your community to compare with. Uh, we've got some great things happening at our parks, uh, for, for different folks. I mean, I live in the northeast, and, uh, that northeast park, um, is getting very high utilization. Um, that modular is, is very well received by the neighborhood, I think they're, you know, they want the next item, which is they wanna, uh, you know, do a park shelter or something like that, so it's great to see people in our parks, kids in our parks, um, you know, good, good thing for them, as well as our, our fully, uh, adapted, uh, swing in Veterans Park, which, um, it may not be getting quite as much use, but it's definitely serving. which it may not be in quite as much use, but it's definitely serving a big community and it's, it's very good for folks from young, old. The first person to write it was actually Ben's father, who was in a wheelchair, who, and it was interesting. He said he wanted to test out the weight limit. So, I think the, the whole setup was like seven hundred and fifty pounds and the swing's rated up to eight hundred. And so, he got his dad on, because it's a fully mechanized kind of a setup, and got his dad on there and, and yep, it worked just fine. So, hopefully, you know, we'll be all right. But anyways, the, and that's great, because it was a lot of volunteers. We have to appreciate those volunteers that did a great job fundraising and all the donors and also our city staff and the time that they put in to get that ready to go. I was on the bus tour yesterday, which I told the end, remind me not to go on bus tours, because six hours on a bus is long enough. But we got up to visit to Eota and also up to St. Charles and see kind of the different things they're doing. Eota, city of two thousand, actually has five active housing subdivisions right now that are being built. So, and they are utilizing tax incentives extremely heavily, tax abatement, TIF. So, some things we're familiar with. They're actually using it for single family in Eota, which there are definitely pluses and minuses on that. But they're hoping to see a lot of growth. There's St. Charles, a little bit smaller. They're seeing kind of the flip side. They have a couple of buildings being built by Habitat for Humanity. However, they've only had two housing permits pulled out a year. So, you know, it's just a matter of that, I think that closeness to Rochester is, you know, you get out to St. Charles, which is just sort of on the edge of the metro. And almost at, St. Charles is half of what Northern County happened in Olmsted County. It's interesting. And got to see Nancy Zawarski. So, of course, you remember Nancy retired. It was good to see her. She's still participating with that. Planning and zoning review is coming up next week and there'll be some interesting things there. Received our first application for a local dispensary, which will include that information for you to review and be brought to the council for evaluation on the twenty-second. And then I know the mayor asked me to get him signed up for this meeting from Semblum on the thirtieth. If you're interested, let me know. There's a free meal included with that from the Southeast Minnesota Together folks. So, they have some information for that. Couple of other things I just wanted to highlight. It is Public Power Week and we're celebrating our public power, electric utility here. We appreciate all the hard work of our alignment and our folks at Public Works that do such a good job, especially when we have storms and things like that, of getting things cleaned up and getting trees trimmed and helping the community. And also the fact that we have lower rates than the utilities around us, so we appreciate that as well. The other thing I wanted to note is I was at the Chamber of Commerce today and interesting fact, I know sometimes we hear from folks about the school district. Superintendent indicated the school district total number of students this year is one higher than it was last year. So, I know sometimes we do developments and people come and say, well, we're afraid we're going to overwhelm the school. She indicated they have one more student in Cassin Manorville School District this year than they did in twenty-twenty-four. So, she said that, you know, they're just not seeing the surge they forecasted maybe five years ago. And it has to do with a lot of factors. A lot of it has to do with, you know, COVID and some of the things that had to do with that, home affordability, things like that. Byron is seeing a decline and they're actually cutting sections of their, their school district. They're capping open enrollment too for certain things. But anyway, so I just wanted to highlight that, you know, because some folks say, you know, and our goal, obviously, when we look at subdivisions is to make sure that the right number of folks come. Because, you know, some people say, oh, we don't want to have too much growth. But our school district also is a really good school district. We want to continue to be able to support the teachers we have through the student base that we do. Anyway, just interesting factoid, and I think, do I have anything else in there? I don't know if I do, let me see. I think that's all I've got for tonight. Any questions, anyone has? Otherwise, thank you.
Thank you. Up next, engineers report.
All right, thank you, Mayor and Council. Three probably quick items tonight. The first one being trail under Highway fourteen funding update. I don't have anything in your council packet, no figures, but last council meeting, Mr. Christensen asked where we're at on that. So, I went back and ultimately, staff talked about it and we're recommending to apply for LPP funding through MINDOT. LPP may be familiar, that's what we got money for the roundabout. And then our fifty-seven project we just started. So, we just got some of the funds that were just available, there's some more in there. So, we may have two applications. So, we ultimately think, you know, we're asking for two, two projects might be a little bleak, but at the end of the day, there's money there. So, putting together an application is what we're recommending. So, just wanted to talk that through tonight, mail this, what the project would look like from our vision. It would be underneath Highway fourteen, removing that shoulder, adding some curb and gutter pedestrian facilities along there. From Daniels Plaza across from subway there to the south to the trail that we're just ready to about to open up there at the Park and Ride. So, that's been on our Safe Routes to School plan. We have some underserved communities down in that area and we're also growing down there too. So, I think it'd be great to get those people across. We see them walking that, that shoulder all the time. So, the more we can get pedestrian friendly, we think the better. So, it's, I think it's going to be a good application. So, I guess ultimately, looking for direction tonight for us to pursue that, get stuff together and obviously, bring it back to the council for formal approval in some middle at a later date. But I don't want to spend staff time on stuff that we don't want to pursue. But we've been successful and think it's a good project and there's money there, so let's, let's go after it, is our thought. So, I'll pause there.
I'm going to, from a believer, if you don't ask, you won't know. Is there any way you could, and I know this can probably be hard, determine how many people walk?
You can, I think there's pedestrian counters.
I would just like to throw that in there as part of it, or at least an estimate, to look at the safety aspect of it, you know.
That sounds like Ian's job. Ian, Ian might have.
You don't want, you don't want to stand in certain.
Give him an umbrella, Ian, you can, you can.
Because I just, I would look at, MINDOT would be more susceptible to share money if they found out there was a high number of.
It definitely seems like it's picking up. Like, I've seen more people.
More and more every day and I was just curious.
And I think our efforts, you know, we're extending that trail through the DNR program. We're developing down there. It's in our Safe Roads School. I think we got enough ammunition, if I will, to really sell it. The other thing is there's two county engineers, two city engineers from our district in Southeast Minnesota and I think two MINDOT employees that rate these projects. And quite frankly, we were the highest rated of all the projects and they actually didn't fund certain projects because they weren't good enough. So, I think we have enough to really get a good application together. So, now that that went hurt, but I don't know that we'll be able to.
We don't have enough time.
Get it together, so.
Curiosity.
No, good, good thought though. So, again, direction moving forward, I'm assuming that's a consensus, yes, and we will?
Yes.
Second item, somewhat related, again, making our town more pedestrian friendly, Eighth Avenue bike lanes. I'm calling it Eighth Avenue, but it's a little bit unique and I do have a request for council action in here with some figures. But ultimately, Dodge County manages Eighth Avenue and then it turns into Veterans Memorial Parkway there. They are going to resurface the concrete portion of that, so from Main Street going to the south, then to the east out of town, through the corridor. And ultimately, kind of, when they resurface that, they're going to grind the concrete, grind the pavement markings off. So, we have an opportunity to kind of start with a clean slate. So, the question that I have, is there an interest in providing bike lanes along one or both sides of Eighth Avenue? Really, why we'd be looking at this, parking is really underutilized. There's no bike and pedestrian facility. Similarly, underneath Highway fourteen, we see people walking that shoulder quite often. I would love to move that curb and gutter in, but knowing that that, you know, millions of dollar project and that being a newer street is probably not in the cards. This may provide a nice on-street facility that, that people can use to provide some more protection to them. We did also talk about putting like bollards or jersey barriers up there, but that becomes maintenance and we got county maintenance. We thought, you know what, let's just maybe stripe some, some areas in here. So, obviously, we talked to Dodge County. Their, their preference is option one, which is essentially bike lane and both options, but they were open to the other one. So, again, I'm just here tonight to look for some council direction on pursuing this. So, with that said, I do have a couple of figures in there. The first one is a figure we put together for the chamber that shows our facilities, specifically in red there is trails and it's outdated. We've actually built a fair amount of trails up in northwest. But we have that gap there that's labeled Eighth Avenue Bike Lane from Fifth Street, which is the Dodge County Sunset Trail, going southerly over our Main Street, over the road tracks by CHS and the CHS Water Tower. And then we have a trail that picks up again there at Lyons Park and then continues to the east. So, that's that map that just shows a overview of the city. And I guess I'll also note, we go right by our Hyde Park, which has our library facility there and then also a ball field. And the second figure there, that's labeled kind of off to the right there, Park Recreation and Active Living. That's from your comprehensive plan. And when we did the comprehensive plan, we looked at potential trail alignments. And you can see one of the most desired sections included this kind of lack of a trail system there. So, it was one of the most desired. I mean, you see Sixteenth Street extension from the High School to West is, was maybe even more desirable now. We got that built and we're currently building it. So, you know, we've been knocking kind of these things out, so I think, you know, this is the next step in having a nice comprehensive trail system. And then the other figure there is just a little sketch of what that would look like. That's just two figures there labeled Eighth Avenue. Essentially, there's a drive lane, twelve foot wide both directions and a ten foot parking lane existing. So, option number one there is remove parking from both sides and have one directional trail on both sides. That would be striped as a bike lane, knowing that pedestrians would still likely use that. And then this one, I'm not, the staff wasn't too keen on this along with the county, but I think there is an option of getting parking on one side of the street and then, and then just having a bike lane on one side striped in one direction, but then, you know, biking wouldn't be facilitated in the other direction. And the assumption there is they would use other streets. And then lastly, I have a figure and they're kind of showing both ends of the project of what that would look like. And again, the county was open to us doing this. What is the only downfall that I see is the people that live along the corridor removing parking, same conversation we had on fifty-seven. I thought we were going to get some pretty big pushback on fifty-seven. We had one property owner that said he wasn't for that. The rest of the properties were all for removing parking along the corridor. So, what I always do is I do the, the poor way of counting parking is I go back to our old eritography, look at Google Street View and Google Earth. So, along the nine blocks, in twenty-three, there was two cars using the parking. Twenty-twenty, there was one car, nineteen, there were six cars. Google Maps is currently showing two cars. Google Street View is five cars. So, over nine blocks, there's not a lot of usage of, of that corridor. So, the question before you tonight is can we better use that corridor converting it from parking to a bike lane? I will also note that there is the ball field along that corridor, which I think there's some parking usage there, but we also have the road to the north and the south of the ball field. And then we've also added some parking at the library. I could see a scenario where parking would, would be nice to have along that corridor, you know, if we had a big Little League game going on there. Just wanted to note that county will likely make us pay for any additional pavement markings if we stripe it, you know, green and different bike facilities and signage. They did note that. If it's above and beyond what they truly would do. And I also know, there's also a portion that's already no parking along the townhouses along the west side too. So, not sure how that was striped in there or marked or signed, but.
There are signs.
Yeah, there are signs there, so I'm not aware of that, but, so it's already some no parking along the corridor. So, it's paint on the ground, it's not costly, so it's a nice, you know, cost effective option to make it more bike and ped fit friendly. So, I'll pause there. I guess it may also note, there was a possibility of continuing these bike lanes to the south and east and all the way to the roundabout. But we do have the brewery there starting up. I know they've used a lot of parking along that corridor. But something that, if you'd like me to look into more, we definitely can, can look into it to continue those bike lanes all the way to the roundabout fifty-seven. So, I'll pause there and see, again, just looking for some direction tonight on moving forward with working with the county. Because again, don't want to bring stuff formally if it's not something we're interested in. But I think it could add a lot of value if council's direction is to add some more pedestrian and bike facilities to connect the gap that is, I think, pretty obvious in our system, so.
Well, I've walked and biked a route many times and with my family. If I saw one car parked out in all the years I've done it, it's really, and that's usually on weekends when I'm doing it. So, I would think as many people as you see walking along there, it's like going on fifty-seven, it would be a good option. And I kind of like it on both sides versus one.
You'd get a lot more usage on both sides, for sure.
Then you got instead of people trying to go both in the same lane and.
I'll say though, if you take out the parking in front of the brewery, that is going to be a big hit for him.
And that was one of the, one of the things we thought about on that corner was since they're rebuilding that bridge as part of the street project, is that we would just kind of prefer to have people routed south and then come out, you know, a little further down.
Yeah.
Because, you know, there is the economic impact for him and I think ideally, we'd have it connected in, but, you know, it would be a detriment for sure, so.
We don't have to decide on that part of it today, correct?
Well, ultimately, if you give me direction to put the bike lanes in, we would just be moving forward, working with the county and getting the striping plan in their plan set. And then they will ultimately do it and send us a bill. But no, I would like, you know, unless, you're uncomfortable making the decision, but I mean, it'd be nice to talk it out and decide it or we can bring back more information or reach out to the brewery too. I don't know if you'd like us to do that and see what Mr. Shrold thinks of it. I'm happy to do that.
I like the dual bike lanes on Eighth from that, from the four-way, by the Senex all the way to the dump road. I think dual is good. Will we do dual all the way south around to the park and then stop there?
I think you would stop at the entrance to the water tower where the off-street facility, the bike.
There is sidewalk there. There is sidewalk.
There's a trail.
Yeah, we want the trail on the south. I mean, we'd use the south.
Yeah.
Be safer.
I've got a bunch of questions here. First, I'm looking at these RCA. You say they are resurfacing from Main Street south. That leaves a lot of Eighth Street not resurfaced.
Correct, but there's already no fog line, the white line and like the green through the intersections, the delineated bike lane. There's nothing there, so we don't need to resurface that.
So, they're not resurfacing it, but they're going to let us restripe it or repaint it?
Correct, yep, correct.
Okay.
And then furthermore, we, we in theory could do it on Eighth, but they're going to have a striper there to restripe their center line and their fog line. So, already mulled in, restriping it, let's stripe what we want in there. And the county engineer and staff has basically just deferred to us to say, if it meets daily standards, it's kind of in your guys' city, we're fine with, your guys' parking, right? So, they just want, obviously, there are three lanes for their county traffic, so they're open to it. So, they will expand their project to the north to accommodate us, so we're working with them. So, it's, it's basically the most efficient time for us to stripe anything would be with their project, because they're going to have striping anyway.
So, this is a concrete road. How are they resurfacing? Are they, you said they're going to mill, are they going to asphalt over the top of that?
Nope, they're going to, I believe they're going to grind it, so they're going to grind down the asphalt, because now it's kind of bumpy. So, they go in there and diamond grind it and take a small portion of the asphalt off.
I thought it's concrete.
I'm sorry, concrete.
Oh, they're just going to smooth it down and not going to add anything to it?
Yep, well, that's my understanding. I, I haven't got to.
How does that work with curbs or are there no curbs on that road?
There's curbs.
Yeah, it's just going to be a small grinding. They don't grind much of it down. Actually, a lot of new concrete roads after they do and they actually come back and grind them. I think like fourteen was ground after they poured it, just for rideability.
This document says it's from Second Avenue to Fifth Avenue, but I think those are meant to be Second Street to Fifth Street?
Yes, correct.
Because that doesn't make sense.
Yep.
I guess my comment is, is while this is great for bike lanes, I don't know that it's going to help pedestrians that much. I mean, basically, we're just taking what's existing and doing a little picture of a guy on a bicycle on the road and putting up some no parking signs, right? Like.
No parking signs.
Not really adding any safety for pedestrians that might be traveling on the side of the road, right?
Yeah, they wouldn't have to go out and around to park car, so then they're getting closer to traffic. In addition to that, we'll have green across the intersections, like we have blocked out pedestrian crossings. We'll have, that will be green across, and I see a lot in like downtown Rochester, a lot of the bike crossings, just to emphasize that it is a bike and bike corridor, knowing that pedestrians also use the bike corridors. What we can't do is we can't designate it as a pedestrian corridor itself, even though pedestrians, you know, have a right to do it. They have a right to walk on the street. I can't show it as a pedestrian, like onsite pedestrian facility for walking. It's just for a bike.
Why?
Bike manuals and everything else. So, there's Minnesota Manual Uniform Traffic Control Devices, which is the state version, which follows a federal version of certain requirements.
There was discussion last time, I think this came up, about potentially using some bollards to get a little bit more clarity between, or safety, or perceived safety, at least between the bike lane and the road.
The real issue there is maintenance and then all the driveways. So, now we got these bollards that have to be maintained. We could even put them like jersey barriers and a lot of downtown areas have those. And then what do we do in the winter when they have to plow it? The county is going to want to see those removed. And then if we go with like a pedestrian, like a protected pedestrian lane doing that, we can't actually take it away in the winter and say, well, it's not a pedestrian lane anymore if it's striped as such. So, I'd love to move the curb line in and put just a trail on one side off the road, but I think that road is built in early two thousands. I mean, it's not that old and I think, I think it should have been reduced and it sounds like that was an option that the council at the time didn't want to reduce it down, but here we are. I mean, we just don't have room to sneak a trail in off the road the way it currently sits. It's kind of a wider road. We have telephone poles the whole way. We have a limited amount of right of way, so I can't easily just sneak a trail in there without redoing the road, pulling curbs in. And then turn, I have to move all the storms, so it's going to get, we will spend, it'll be a million dollars out there, but we'd spend at least a half a million dollars trying to retroactively put a trail in. It's just difficult to do, so.
For the edge lines, are they just going to be painted? They, they have, going to have reflectors or anything embedded?
Yeah, it'll probably be reflective painting. I'll have to talk to the county on that.
What about like the little things where they actually like recess a little reflector into the road?
I don't know if they're going to do that or not. It's usually on rural roads. We could, I could talk to the county about. And the other thing is like a rumble strip along there too.
Yeah. Because I, I don't know, I like the bike lane. I'm just not sure if, like, if I'm riding a bike with my kids in the trailer, if that would be enough for me and be like, yeah, okay, I feel safe running down this road now, you know?
There's less area.
But it's better than nothing.
There's less area, area allowance, people do now.
I think that's a good point. It's a low-cost solution. It's ten thousand dollars of, you know, paint compared to a half a million to move the curb in and provide a nice facility. Happy to do that, too, if that's the council's direction.
I'd do more than that, I'm sure, wouldn't it?
Yeah, half million, million. I mean, we could, I'd have to run some numbers, of course, but...
Yeah. And then as for the continuing it all the way to the roundabout, I mean, there's already a trail along the side of the road there, so I'm not sure that we really need to do that. And secondly, you mentioned the parking for the brewery. Like, I definitely think we want to try and maintain street parking when we're in commercial districts, right?
That's why staff doesn't ever recommend it here. I just wanted at least to have the conversation. Because the other thing that maybe wasn't mentioned is, so if you're southbound on the bike lanes, you get on the trail on the south side by Lyons Park, and you're going to the brewery, there is a sidewalk, which is Second Avenue there, and you can take it right at the brewery, go south into our third, fourth, and fifth project. And then we did add some sidewalk and close some gaps there to get us out to fifty-seven. So if you're riding or walking and assisting to get to fifty-seven, you could go a block to the south by Plaza Fifty-Seven and get out to fifty-seven, so that is interconnected, so.
Get the climbs easier.
Yeah, get the climbs easier and get an ice cream cone, so, and ride back.
Okay. That's some of my questions for now.
I'm going to be the Debbie down there. I don't like them. I definitely don't like two of them. I don't like it on each side. I'm all for making it more pedestrian-friendly, but the bike lanes themselves, I'm opposed to them, and that's just...
Can you comment at all on what the striping cost might be if the county doesn't want to do it for us?
I don't know, ten thousand, maybe?
If that's what they're deploying and being here already?
Yeah, yeah.
I was just asking, how much additional would it be? Hard to determine.
Yeah, I don't know. I'd have to run some numbers. Maybe fifteen, five thousand dollars a moment in.
Well, I just see with as many people that walk and ride there now, this is just going to give them that extra area. You're going to have ten feet is better than what they got now, and they're going to do it either way. If we can make it a little safer, that's the ultimate goal.
Ryan, what don't you like?
Well, we're also inconveniencing homeowners that might need to use that for parking.
According to his data, there's not enough using, there's more walking than there's parking.
For that one person who needs to park there, that's all the data that person needs. And then when no one wants to bike on it, or when no one, like I'm just saying, I'm opposed to inconveniencing the homeowners in favor of a bike path.
I think it's valid discussion, so.
If it was on one side?
I would be more, more open to one side, because at least then the homeowner could park on one side, even if their home was on the other side. I would be more open to that, yes.
The south side of it is largely apartments and condos.
I'm sorry.
Sorry. They have no voice. The south side of that part of the street is mostly apartments and condos with their own off-street parking. The little bit of single-family resident, there isn't really. There's one, maybe two, single-family residential houses that border out onto Thirty-four. Otherwise, their parking is on, what street is that that runs through there? First Street, Second Street?
Yeah, First Street, Second.
That runs east to west on the other side of their property. So I hear you with that, because I totally agree. But it's, this is kind of a unique part of town, especially with the parks and with the apartments down there and connecting the two parks and the library. Because I do know, speaking as the library board liaison, it is something that they've been very interested in having, is getting that, that park and the library connected to the trail system.
And I'm still completely on board with doing everything to make it safer for pedestrians.
I mean, if you did one side, would you, would you do it on the west side, then? Because you've got St. John's, which they already have plenty of off-street parking, so that wouldn't be a huge issue for them. Would impact the homeowners, you know, because that's not a problem. You've got apartments, like you said, that are already no parking on that side, and you've got apartments on the south tip down by Main Street that are, you know, that you don't see a lot of parking out there. So, you know, you're only looking at maybe four or five houses that's like between Fifth and maybe like Third on that side that would have any real loss, potential loss on-street parking if you did the west side. Now, the only thing with that is then you'd have to bring it across the street with the crossing, so get onto the trail, because the trail's on the east side of the...
We'll have to bring it across somewhere, yeah.
And that's where the library is, anyway.
Right, right.
Yeah, but it'd be better to have the parking next to the ball field there, wouldn't it? So...
But then you'd leave the parking on by the ball field on the east side.
That's what we're saying.
Yeah, that's what I just said.
Yeah, but Mel was saying that you'd have to cross to get to the library, because the trail's on the wrong side of the road, right?
No, the trail and the library are both on the east side.
Yeah, but the bike lane would be on the west side.
The bike lane on the west side.
Correct, correct. However, you've got, you've got the, what is it, one or two houses between Main and First Street north, east northwest. And you could switch the trail over at the four-way stop at Main and Eighth and then have the bike lane continue. I see what you're saying, because then once you get past the library, you do have, there's a few more houses there.
Putting a crosswalk on Main and Eighth would not be a very good spot, in my opinion, as you see all the cars that go through that stop sign that don't stop now.
Flashers up.
But I'm just, you know what I mean?
I know.
And with the option of flashers, I'll go back to what Public Works and maybe even if an engineer always says, you put too many in, people don't look at those either. Because they just kind of like, ah, and people are pushing them, or kids aren't using them. So, I mean, I'm just, I'm afraid that's too busy of an intersection for that crosswalk, especially with the elevator there and...
Brandon, Wendy, you, they're not, are they looking at doing this next year, then?
Yeah, yep, so they're working on their construction plan, so at some point we'll have to get, you know...
You don't need a decision, like, do you?
No, I don't think so.
It sounds like maybe we need to think about it a little bit more.
Yeah, that's, that's fine.
Do the houses on Eighth have elongated park driveways?
It's kind of hit and miss. I don't know where you're going with that, so like if they can park in their...
I mean, it looks like some of them have got double spots and some of them are single. I mean...
Fifth down to Third is pretty much an on issue. All you're saying if you can park outside your garage, yeah, it looks like they all probably are deep enough.
That's why you don't have a lot of on-street parking in that area.
That was my question, was leading to is if they had those elongated driveways, is that why they're avoiding parking on the street? Because they can fit a car or two in their garage, and they have enough of a driveway where they've already got one or two cars in their driveway?
They're actually avoiding parking on that, on the street there simply because of the sheer quantity of traffic, you don't want your car to get hit.
Yeah, the other part is, I mean, there is side streets, so, you know, if you're a block deep and you live in the north part of this block or the south, you can park on the side streets as opposed to Eighth, too.
Yeah, but what about those houses there where Fourth Street doesn't exist?
Yeah, Fourth Street would be a really spot.
Say they're having Thanksgiving, and all their families got to park on Third and walk up the block, you know?
I, I think we'll get some more information and come back.
Yeah, that's fine.
All right. So next, development agreement, certificate of acceptance.
Yeah, so in your council packet is two certificate of acceptance. These are documents that is part of your development agreement process. So the first part there, the developer finishes the subdivision, fills that out. The second part is where myself and Mr. Charlie Bradford, Public Works Director, review it to make sure that the, the project's all done. We develop a punch list, they complete it, and then we bring it to the council for formal acceptance, and that's what we're asking tonight. So it looks like the mayor gets to sign it on behalf of the city. That just basically lays out the date of acceptance. So if we accept subdivisions, it starts a one-year maintenance period laid out in the development agreement. And we talked about the surety in the letter of credit that was in the council packet earlier, that's, you know, tied to that, so that way that's our, our stick, if you will, to have the developer finish their work. And then after one year, we will, if there's any deficiencies, we will note to them how the developer can fix it up. And then at that point, it does become public infrastructure. You've kind of lost all of your control to obligate the developer to do anything, but we're, you know, usually two years plus after, you know, road's been installed and infrastructure's been built, because we do have a one-year, additional one-year between paving the wear course, so it actually goes through two winters. So we want to keep pushing these, we've been kind of sloppy on our end of getting, you know, all these to the council and then getting the developer to do them, and then, you know, developments never get, number one, don't get finished, and two, we don't lay out what's clear for the developers. We all done that, but, so that's why I wanted to bring these back and get them to you as a council. So with that, I'll pause there and request you guys to review and potentially approve these certificate of acceptance.
Do we have any questions for Brandon? Okay. Do you need a motion or just...
Yeah, make a motion to accept would be appreciated.
You want to do one for each?
Two of them is fine with me.
I'll make the motion to accept both.
We have a motion to accept both certificate of acceptance?
Second.
Second for Brian. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
That's all I had tonight, other than if you have heard, the neutral wires hit on the power line cross in Highway Fourteen. We got a tournament in hand for M.D.O., directional drill line underneath the highway, so we got emergency repairs, like that's going to happen on Monday. So get the electrical system back up in tip-top shape, so...
And that gives us the permission to shut down the highway, to take down the existing?
We're going to work with State Perfold to do that when we, when the sew time comes. We want to get the line back up and running, so electrical department's working on that, so... Well, you won't know what's happening, but we're in directional drill, new line on Monday. And then once we get that activated, then we don't need the overhead line. They'll eventually take that down, close down the highway and take it down, so the overhead line. I don't yet. I can, you know, report back once we get it.
Is de-energized that line already?
It's de-energized.
No, I've just selfish, purely selfish reasons. I've got play practice every day.
Yeah, it'll probably, it'll probably be a such a short amount of time.
It's estimated, according to when I was talking to Charlie, fifteen minutes max. He's, he said they're, once they have permission, they boom up, cut it, and they're going to have guys on the ground pulling it out of the way.
It's going to happen.
He said they figured he could have it done in five, but they want to figure at least fifteen. So he said, really, they would pick a time of the day where minimal traffic and...
Right before play practice.
Get in and get out.
Well, we'll probably, we'll probably bring the guys. The guys will probably come in at night.
Seven-thirty, in the morning.
Yeah, and they want to have enough guys there, so once they cut it, they can just pull it right out of the way and then open back up. That was the...
That's all I had.
All right. Next, personnel, retirement of Kathy Plata, the liquor store manager. We would take a motion to accept her retirement, which would be the end of 2025.
I would regretfully accept the resignation, so move.
Do we have a second?
Thank Kathy for twenty-one years, and I'll second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
And staff is working on filling that position at current time?
Yeah, so we did post that job last week, and I think Linda said she had five so far?
Six.
Six now, okay. Six applications. Planning to review the applications next Monday, and then hopefully do some interviews. Pending those interviews, we'll see, see what kind of applications we get, see what the status for the liquor store will be.
Do, I know it's probably a little late, do we want to look at the job description before? Is there any changes you want to make to the job description?
You know, I did, I did, I did review it, and I mean, we had those updates in 2017. I don't think that that job has changed particularly much since then. I could certainly send that out to everybody if you have anything.
I would, I would appreciate that, just to look at, just in case there's anything...
You want to send them out?
Yeah.
Just, you know, and then do you know what stepping grade and price that would start at roughly? I mean, the whole range?
She is, I can look that up as quick.
Because, you know, obviously, we're not going to be starting them as high, but...
Well...
We advertised it at the 2026 Step One, and which is like thirty-seven, fifty-six of the same grade that she was in, which I think is thirteen, grade thirteen.
Okay. Is this a catalyst for us having a discussion about exiting the liquor store business?
It is if you want to be, Paul.
Is that something we should have tonight, or should we bring it back on another night?
You know, it might be a good topic for a roundtable.
Let's do that, then.
Sounds good.
All right. Thank you, Kathy, for all your time. Up next, attorney.
In your packet, there is a letter from our office, just indicating because of the rising cost of inflation and wages, and in order to align our prices more so with those of competitors, we will increase our hourly rate by ten dollars an hour starting January first. Currently, we are at one sixty-five an hour, so that will be going up to one seventy-five an hour. Anyone have any questions?
What was the percentage increase?
Like seven?
About five percent.
One sixty-five to one seventy-five, whatever it is.
Ten dollars, so...
I'm going to get... Do you think Ian could handle it?
I don't know, maybe, maybe we'll just, I mean, we'll go to law school first, but yeah.
Six percent?
Okay, I have to look at, well, so I mean, based on that, I'm just, the reason I bring it up is I'll be amending our budget then, so...
Is it about six?